Oh, excuse me. In an effort to move along quickly, I skipped David.
I slipped in twenty dollars to do that.
It obviously wasn't enough.
I know.
We have a public hearing on the 2025 library operating budget. And let me turn it over to our CFO.
Thank you, Ben. And as Ben mentioned, this is the operating budget for 2025. This is not the facility master plan capital project that we'll be discussing later. But just some of the highlights of the budget. We had discussed this in the Finance and Personnel Committee about a month ago, a month and a half. There's been no changes, no alterations of any of the revenue sources that remain the same. So just some of the highlights, the budget that we are proposing, the official budget, is a little over forty million dollars, forty million oh thirty-nine nine fifty-nine. That represents a three point nine nine three percent increase in our budget over to the 24 budget. Again, if you remember, that expense amount and the levy growth is governed by the maximum levy growth quotient that is established by the state that we stay under. The, with that growth in the levy, we will have a projected property tax levy of around thirty million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. That's a growth of about one point one five million. The impact of the circuit breakers, that is estimated to be one point two million. That is an increase from twenty-four of a little over a hundred thousand, a hundred and six thousand five ninety-seven. The lit amount is our second largest revenue source. That is also projected to go down, lit being local income tax, sorry. That was going down three hundred and forty-four thousand. However, interest earnings continue to be healthy for us, and those were going up seven hundred and fifty thousand. So there's been a lot of trade-offs on the revenues. As far as the expense side, the largest portion continues to be our wages and benefit. That represents approximately sixty-three percent of our budget, a little over twenty-five million. And then capital-related items, now these are capital, like regular maintenance and equipment replaces replacements, not the capital that we're talking about with a separate bonding issue. Those are equalling a little, almost three point two million. That represents eight percent of our budget. And then the library materials, both electronic and hard materials, total a little over five point six million. That represents almost fourteen percent of our budget, which is a very healthy percentage, as I've pointed out in the committees in the past. That is higher than both the Indiana standard, which is eight percent, and the national average, which continues to be around eleven percent. So all those taken in total, we were looking at a tax rate of point one one seven six is what it is estimated. For reference, the twenty-four operating tax rate was point one two three three. That is a drop for twenty-five of almost four point six two percent. So like many of the entities, we are other taxing entities. The growth in assessed value is allowing us to cut our tax rate by almost five percent. So that'll be helpful for the average taxpayer and the homeowners that pay the property tax. But those are the bullet point highlights. I know we talked about it more in detail at the Finance and Personnel Committee, but that completes my part, but if we want to have public comment or any questions.
Sure. Thank you, David.
Sure.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the operating budget? Last call? Well, you explained it perfectly.
All right. Well, just for folks at home, of course, the legislation, the rules governing this is that if ten or more taxpayers wish to file comments or responses, you know, five, you know, within the next ten days, we then will include that in the actions that take place in October. That will be the actual passage of the budget at that time. So in the October board meeting, we'll take a vote on the actual rates and levies at that point.
Great. Let's then move to my favorite topic, the adoption of the agenda.
I think we did that already.
I liked it twice. All right. This is not a good start for me. If no one objects, can I put the minutes together? Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of August twenty-second, twenty-four minutes of the executive session, August twenty-second of twenty-four minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee, August twenty-second of two thousand twenty-four, and the minutes of approval of claims, September sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
It's all moved.
End of second?
Second.
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, nay. David, you're back up.
All right. In the financial report, in your packet are your reports, the really no lines, additional lines to report going off of their benchmarks at this point. A few are spending quickly, but in tradition, they tend to slow down in the fourth quarter, such as the landscaping and snow removal. I hope we don't have snow removal, unfortunately. But so nothing more to report there. Some of the news and notes that I've noted in my treasures report, I've just finished the public hearing for the budget, and we will then move in October to pass or propose it for passage. Once passed, we will have five days to load that to the gateway system, put all the uploads that are required for it, and that'll be established. And then the next thing, we'll be waiting for the DLGF to review it and approve it, and they have until December thirty-first to do that. As far as the 24 budget, as I noted in here, Susan and I and Pete attended the county council meeting in late August, August twenty-seventh, actually. And at that meeting, we did receive approval for the additional appropriation necessary for this year's major roofing, chiller, and solar panel installation. So that went through fine. It was a good meeting. We had a unanimous approval on that, so we were very pleased with the outcome there.
Dave, just one quick question. It was city council.
Sorry, city council. I'm looking forward. Yes, thank you. One of those councils. And then the last thing is the, of course, this meeting, we have a lot of things coming up. I'm not going to talk too much on them, but we have two resolutions and a related public hearing regarding the proposed system-wide transfer transformation project and the financing matters for that. But we'll be getting into that in more details later on in the, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Can I have a motion to approve, subject to audit?
They'll move.
End of second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Passes? Approval of claims?
All right. Today's claims total, we have checks of around a little over one point four million, of which the bulk of it, almost seven hundred and fifty thousand, a little over seven hundred and seventy-six, actually, are related to the roofing project. We have them for not only the roofing, but the train solar project. So that makes up the bulk of it. We have insurance claims of a hundred and seventy, not claims premiums. I shouldn't say claims premiums. And then the rest really is, you know, book material, electronic materials, et cetera.
Any questions?
Just generally, how's the project going with the roof and the solar panels? Where are we at in getting it done?
I don't want to jinx it, but it's going very well. I mean, the weather has been very favorable for us. I mean, while we have been in a drought here, drought is good for roof projects. So everything is on target, and materials have not run into any problem obtaining them. So they are all, actually, the solar materials, I believe, are all on site, and they're moving into that section now. So they're completing the roofing, the overlay that goes on top. And then, of course, the chiller will be the last part, and those parts are seeing no problems in getting those large infrastructure items. So we're still looking at a, almost, well, it's going to be November completion, but it could be earlier. Now I just jinxed it.
Any other question? The claims will be coming around. Can I have a motion?
They'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Now we do have an additional public hearing on appropriations on our two thousand twenty-two countywide facility library transformation project. Let me turn it over to our bond counsel, Jeff Quackenbush.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mrs. Byer. Jeff Quackenbush with Barnes &amp; Thornburg, and we serve as your bond counsel on your bond transactions. So this is the next step in the process. Back in April of two thousand twenty-two, you approved the preliminary termination reimbursement resolution for the system-wide facility transformation project at all the branches for an amount not to exceed ninety-eight million dollars in bonds and not to exceed, and at least twenty-six point five million dollars in library funds. So today, what we are here to do is to have an additional appropriations public hearing on the phase-one portion of those projects. We'll get into some more details regarding that, and there'll be two presentations, one from the library administration covering the proposed phase-one projects that would be most likely done by a part of these bond proceeds and library funds. And then a second would be the financial presentation by Baker Tilly to provide what the tax rate impact and the associated financing costs would be for that phase-one component. If you approve the resolutions that we'll talk about in a little bit after the public hearing, the next step would be to go to the county council to receive their approval of the financing. We would have a public hearing on that as well. And then we would, just like you did on your city council approval for the appropriation of the eight million dollars for the roofing portion of the project, we would need to go back to the city council for the appropriation of both the bond proceeds and the remaining library funds that weren't appropriated back earlier this year above the eight million dollars. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the process at this point. If there aren't any, then I would turn it over to the, to Mrs. Byer, the library administration, to provide you a presentation on the projects themselves.
Thank you, Jeff.
No questions? All right, we'll get started. Thank you so much, Jeff. As Jeff referenced, in two thousand twenty-two, our facility master plan was approved by our Board of Trustees and announced to the community. And when we did that, there was a significant amount of community engagement and input in that process. We had over thirteen hundred completed surveys through the community. We had a series of five open houses with over a hundred in attendance. Our staff spoke at numerous area quadrant meetings and neighborhood association meetings. We had multiple stakeholder focus groups, two public hearings. Ultimately, a referendum was not triggered by the community. And when we had those focus groups and those surveys and those interviews with stakeholders, several themes came to the surface of what the community imagined their future library should look like. And those themes included additional showcasing for library materials, books, for greater access and browsability, signage that promotes easy-to-navigate and accessible spaces, more small and medium-sized spaces for collaborations such as study rooms, rooms to have Zoom interviews, inspirational youth spaces to support reading and learning, very similar to what we have here in the main library and some of our branches, our Storiescape early learning and early literacy centers. An expansion of technology, audiovisual and device charging resources, because many people still use our PCs, but just as many, if not more, are coming in with their own devices and need power. Improvement to steam spaces and Maker Lab offerings, beautification of outdoor spaces to support programming. When we do have beautiful weather in Indiana like we do today, we like to take advantage of it and have programming and activities outside. Designing buildings with separate loud and quiet zones, because we know that sometimes learning needs to be quiet, and sometimes it can be quite noisy. So ideally, our buildings would have zones for both. And also to build inclusive spaces for residents of all demographics, age, and abilities. We know some of our aging facilities do not have the accessibility that our community needs. And speaking of the age of our facilities, you can see from this chart that the bulk of the most recent activity regarding our buildings, regarding capital improvements, was between the early two thousands, around two thousand two, up until two thousand seven with the opening of this building. You see one significant outlier with Aboyt. Aboyt has not been touched since nineteen ninety, but our last significant capital project was in that early oughts period. So in our two thousand twenty-two plan, it was a comprehensive plan for the entire county. The plan that our consultants recommended and our board approved would touch all fourteen of our existing facilities to some degree, and also would have a new facility built in Hunter Town. I think it's important to stress that all these projects are important in their own way, but also, we also knew all along that we would need to phase these projects, we would need to prioritize them. So that's what we're coming to you this afternoon with this possible first phase of the project. So the libraries that are on the proposed project list for phase-one are Aboyt, Shawnee, Dupont, Georgetown, Hessen Castle, New Haven, and our main library. And we'll get into more details about what that looks like for each site. I wanted to share that these projects were chosen with intentionality. It was based on building condition, neighborhood growth and needs, and the location distribution throughout Allen County. It's also important to stress that these proposed projects, this is the current and best proposal based on information we have now. Information can change, so this is subject to change based on cost, real estate availability, and other factors. Future phases have not been determined yet. Future phases for the other libraries in our system, and Hunter Town would require additional hearings and county council approval. I'm going to turn it over to our chief operating officer, Kim, soon to talk about each specific project. But before I do that, we're going to talk about project types, and we thought it was important to define what we mean by certain project types. You're going to hear about recommendations for new builds. That's exactly what it sounds like, a new library built at a nearby site, the existing library building is sold. We're going to have some where we recommend heavy renovation. Heavy renovation would involve changing the layout of the building and/or replacing, updating HVAC, ductwork, plumbing, electrical, roof, foundation, and structural issues. So very significant renovation. We also talk about projects in need of medium renovation, and that includes cosmetic updates as well as repairs or replacement of windows, doors, electric plumbing, or HVAC systems. The exterior and some finishes may also need more repairs and replacement. And finally, there's select renovation that would be targeted improvements in specific areas of the building. And now I will turn it over to our chief operating officer and library building expert, Kim Bowlen, to talk about the various projects and what we are proposing.
Susan, so we'll start with Aboyt. Susan mentioned that it hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety. What we're proposing for this is property sale of the existing site and finding a nearby property to build a new Aboyt branch of twenty-five thousand square feet. Currently, the building really is undersized to accommodate any of the demands. It's one of our busiest branches. And as we know, southwest Allen County is growing and really needs to have appropriate services for that area. Building is in poor condition as well. One of the major concerns is it is settling along a ravine into the north, so that is a huge concern for us. And as I mentioned, the current site is too small, cannot accommodate expansion where it is to meet the needs in the next ten years. So second is Shawnee. Shawnee would be another property sale, and that would be a new construction of about twenty thousand square feet nearby. The building is also in quite poor condition relative to our other branches. It is also half-buried into the site, which creates some unique access and egress challenges as well as temperature control issues, some water problems, little waterfall in the meeting room once in a while, and some pest intrusion concerns. Current building configuration cannot accommodate any expansion, and the service demand over time exceeds the ability for the current branch to be satisfied where it is. Dupont, Dupont's another one of our very busy top three, four library buildings, and this would be a slight modification based on research and lots of listening to our patrons. We are recommending a heavy renovation on the existing site. And the twenty-two plan, twenty twenty-two plan that we originally said twenty-five thousand square feet, similar to what Aboyt would be, but on this site, we think that based on the feedback and different things that we can do, we, patrons love this site, by the way. So we believe where it is, we can do a heavy renovation of the existing building and be good for the future. Just to mention, we did put a new roof on the building back in February of this year. The boilers, air pumps, and air handlers were also replaced, which is another reason why we think we can repurpose this building and make it better for the community. Georgetown would be another heavy renovation on the existing site, and it is also one of our busier locations. Patron feedback was, they, people were very outspoken about loving the site. They also acknowledged space constraints and showed, as I said, strong, strong preference for staying where it is. It's near schools, retail centers, people love that. The building is in good condition relative to the other branches that we have, and our volume of youth passing by after school exceeds the building capacity. So we really need to make some modifications there. And needs can be achieved through changing building layout and more efficient use of space. We think that will make a lovely renovated library. Hessen Castle. So Hessen Castle would be a heavy renovation or option for a property sale and to construct a new building nearby potentially. So appropriately sized to accommodate anticipated ten years' demand in the southeast quadrant, so it is of the right size, but the configuration is poor, the building is not in the best shape, it is not in an ideal location. But relative to the other branches, it is in fairly poor condition and includes older infrastructure that needs significant masonry repair among many other things. So we do have some options potentially for this location. And New Haven, which would be a medium renovation on the existing site. Branch is appropriately sized to accommodate the current and ten-year growth in demands. And the building is also geometrically complex, but it, and current site could accommodate a modest expansion potentially, or just an interior renovation. It has lovely green space around it, and the demand over time exceeds the ability for the current branch to satisfy it. So there's lots of options for New Haven. And last, we've talked about this a few times already in the meeting, but earlier this year, we, the library, put an eight million dollar investment out of our reserve funds for work on the new roof and the solar panels, as well as the chiller, cooler, cooling tower replacement, and its relocation. And that was, again, just to reiterate, Dave, eight million dollar appropriation by city council, and that was in August of twenty-four. So we have been working on it. We mentioned we are luckily on track, things are going well. And just one other thing to mention, why Main is on here also is because Main would also, part of the bond financing would be used for select interior renovations in different areas of this building that are in heavy need of some attention. And those are the seven projects in phase one.
Thank you, Kim. I will now turn it over to our Capital Projects Committee Chair, Marty Seifert.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. I'm glad you're all here. I'm glad whoever's on the internet is here as well. So as we go through the presentation, part of what we want to talk about, why the time to act, why, as we put it, why the time to act is now. We've been going through this over two years now. We passed our resolution for the entire project back in April. That was after, I would say, a couple of years of really looking into this with experts, with our own people, to try to understand demographics, condition of our buildings, and what we need for the future. And I think it's pretty clear, our analysis in our facility master plan, and then most importantly, our community has told us the time to act is now. We have a growing population in Allen County. I think that puts up there, we are growing faster than America, faster than Indiana, and all the projections are similar to that that I've seen and that our experts have shown us over the years, is Allen County is growing, and we have a growing population, and our growing population uses the library. The facility master plan was partly necessary because of this growth and our expected future growth. We talk about ten years in the future. I always say, I'm trying to build, this is for 2050. This is to try to build this library so that people in 2050 have it and can love it as much as we do our current library system. And I think it's pretty clear for us, it's time to plan for and the time to invest in. Our future is now. If we can go to the next one, we have conducted a poll using, I think, a pretty well-established, independent polling company, and it asked a variety of questions, but the highlights are, it asked, what are their opinions of the Allen County Public Library and the support they would have for funding improvements in the Allen County Public Library? And the strategic insight that we had, we wanted to highlight, and we asking, is the county, is the Allen County Public Library, would you support the Allen County Public Library in a bond package to keep the branches open, repair its aging buildings, ensure all branches have wheelchair-assetability and functionality, and all branches have up-to-date type of technology? And quite frankly, we had overwhelming support. We have a large amount of the population of Allen County loves our library and wants to support it. I'm especially happy, to get more into the details, they asked various demographics, and the poll shows there's consistent support among almost every, or among every demographic, age, income level, political perspective, for example. Our county supports our library. So the bottom line, as we go through this, one, we've always planned this to be in phases, and this, so this, instead of going for, asking for the complete bond, we're asking for the bond for this first phase as we see it. We believe delay would result in additional costs, it's just the nature of the beast, things are going to get more expensive. But the key insights we had from the poll is the Allen County views its government and its library favorably. Voters see the need for the library improvements. Voters, I believe, support county council passing the bond. They trust the system, and they see the benefit of that bond passage sooner rather than later. So we believe that it's time for this, is now, and we're going to try to move forward with this as well now.
Thank you, Marty. And now I will turn it over to our chief financial officer, Dave Sethystrom, to speak about the estimated project costs and funding for our proposed phase-one.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, talking about the costs and the funding, really, the costs come down to three areas. And, you know, at this point, based on the original consultant estimates, the modifications to the plans, the cost increases due to inflation and other factors, we're right now estimating that the costs would be, first, hard and soft costs of $58 million. Hard and soft costs, of course, they represent not only the construction, the labor, materials, et cetera, but also other things regarding permits and, you know, fight the architect fees, furniture, moving, all the things that go into that type of work. The second item we have to consider is land acquisition. As Kim pointed out, we have a potential two, maybe three locations that are going to need new land. Obviously, we'd also be able to sell our existing properties, but we need to buy the land before we can close our current ones. And so we're looking at a net of around 3.8 million needed for that phase or that part of the financing. This is in process right now, and as you all know, real estate prices vary, but that's the best estimate at this point. The last issue, or the last item for cost is the, you know, cost of issuance. We'll be issuing bonds, and we have professional fees. Those mainly involve underwriter fees, possible premium discounts, the, not only the legal advice, the financial advice, and other professional fees, as I mentioned. Those look to talk, or cost around $900,000. So all told, the project total cost is going to be about $62.7 million. How will we fund this? Well, it's going to come with three, or three items also. Obviously, as I've talked in the past, through years now, because, you know, we started this project 2022, but for years before, we knew we were going to need reserves. Through your efforts, the Board of Trustees, as well as the administration, we've been very diligent at keeping costs very contained, making sure that we are getting the most efficient use of our dollars. And we've been able to create some significant reserves for these projects, and they were intended for this project to begin with. What we're planning on for this phase is a contribution of $20 million in reserves that will be put toward these costs. We're also going to have estimated interest earnings. We will have bond proceeds, assuming this is passed, that will be used. This is going to be a project that's going to be not completed, most of these, not until in 2026, possibly '27. So we are going to have those invested and earning at, you know, a certain rate. And I know the feds cut the rates lately. Hopefully, they, you know, will stay good and will continue to earn interest. But we're estimating around $800,000 for that phase. And then additional addition, estimated additions to reserves. As I said, we've got '24, '25, and '26 that are going to be ranging over this. My estimates for, as we continue to keep costs very low and lean, we should be able to accommodate up to another $4.9 million that we will be able to build by the end of '26 for contribution to this project. The combination of that then totals $25.7 million. So when you look at the $62.7 million and the $25.7 million, we will be asking or required to get a bond financing of $37 million. And that's what our proposal is going to be for. Just some quick math, the amount of contribution that we would be putting for would be 41% of this project, and bond financing would account for 59%.
Thank you, Dave. We'll hear soon from Baker Tilly. But quickly, let's talk about next steps. So as you see on the agenda tonight, our Board of Trustees will be voting upon two resolutions, assuming those are approved. Our next step will be for the library to request that the county council hold a public hearing and vote on approval of this proposal at their November 13, 2024 meeting. It's important to remember that this proposal cannot go forward without the approval of county council. We need county council's approval to issue the bonds. And now I will turn it over to Jason Tanzel with Baker Tilly to talk about the tax implications.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for having me at today's meeting. My name is Jason Tanzel with Baker Tilly, and we represent the library as your municipal advisor. So now that we've had an opportunity to hear about the project's scope and need, we will now review the impact to the library's patrons of issuing a $37 million general obligation bond. This general obligation bond would be repaid through property taxes of the library. So we will also show the tax rate impact of this issuance to the patrons of the library. But first, we want to provide a summary of some of the financial characteristics that would be within any resolutions for the board. It's important to keep in mind that these are maximums, and these are maximums that we cannot exceed, but we can come down from. They include items such as borrowing amount, repayment term, interest rate, and total aggregate debt service, as you'll see here on this slide. So with that, as we have discussed, this at a maximum will be a borrowing amount of $37 million, and we have assumed a repayment term of 19 years, 10 months. The maximum repayment term will be established at 20 years. Currently, we estimate interest costs to be just over $28 million, but I do want to point out that this is assuming a 6% interest rate. We do try to be conservative with these estimates. Currently, the bond market today is more closely aligned with 4%. So we do feel like the $28 million mark using the 6% is conservative. The maximum annual payment for this one series of bonds will be $4,075,000, and total aggregate principal and interest will not exceed $69,423,000. You can see on our final row that the tax rate increase associated with this bond will be 1.65 cents. And we would anticipate this tax rate impact occurring in tax payable 2026. So we are talking about a general obligation bond here for Phase One that would be issued at the earliest next year in 2025. So this would not hit the tax rolls in 2025, but rather it would impact the tax rolls in 2026. Next slide, please. Here you can see, we've provided a five-year history of where the library's debt service payments have been, as well as the tax rate. So we started in 2019. The debt service tax rate of the library was 3.66 cents, and the annual payment associated with that was just over $6 million. And you can see, as Mr. Sethystrom has mentioned, assessed value of the library has grown over the past five years. And you can see that that tax rate steadily fell from 2019 through the maturity of the last outstanding bonds of the library through 2021. So currently, the library does not have any bonds outstanding. All bonds of the library have been repaid since 2021. And so with this issuance, we would have a maximum annual payment there in 2026. That's that first blue bar. That's a little bit higher. And again, you can see the tax rate associated with that of 1.65 cents. Thereafter, we would estimate annual payments would be just over $3.4 million, and the rate associated with that is 1.22 cents. You also, I did want to point out, I'm sorry, Susan, but also wanted to point out that this does assume those blue bars, that's the 19-year repayment term. So this bond does have a 19-year life. Next slide, please. Finally, what does 1.65 cents mean to the patrons of the library? On this slide, we have provided a summary of different assessed values throughout the county, as well as agricultural and commercial assessed values, where we've taken a range of homes throughout the county and provided what a 1.65 cent increase would mean in dollars to the patrons. There's obviously, I'm not going to run through every single one of these line items, but I do want to point out that we are basing this taxpayer impact on the net assessed value of homes, assuming the standard deduction and the supplemental homestead deductions that are available to homeowners. And also wanted to point out that the supplemental homestead deduction assumes that that is back to its pre-2024 levels of 35%. The past two years, this was increased by the state legislation to 40%, phased to 37.5% next year, down to 35% in 2026. So because this bond will be having an impact to the 2026 tax rate, we have assumed that supplemental homestead deduction is back to 35%. So looking at the median home value within Allen County, you can see that that is footnoted as $226,000. That's the one-year survey estimate from the U.S. Census Bureau, that the net assessed value after the standard deduction and the supplemental homestead deduction is applied is $115,700. Multiplying that by the 1.65 cents, we can see here that the total dollar impact to the median home within Allen County is just over $19. We also do provide this on a monthly basis for paying escrow, that you can see that that would be $1.59 per month.
Total, repeat that again, that's a question.
Absolutely. So for the median home, the total dollars paid for the 1.65 cents would be just over $19, at $19.09.
A year.
Per year. Per year, yes. And that would be $1.59 on a monthly basis. We've also provided this for agricultural land and business personal property. Agricultural land, that assessment varies greatly depending upon items such as productivity factors. So we have assumed from the Department of Local Government Finance, the base rate, which is $2,280 per acre. And you can see, we, the one acre and the 100 acres are really intended to be used as multipliers. So you can see for someone who owns 100 acres of farmland, that would be $37.62 a year. For our businesses, assuming a $100,000 business, no deductions applied, that would be $16.50 per year. I also do want to point out that the, we're looking at the 1.65 cent tax rate increase that will happen in 2026, that the library's tax rate, because of assessed value growth, has fallen. For example, in 2022, the total tax rate of the library was just over 14 cents. And you heard Mr. Sethystrom say today with his budget hearing, the 2024 tax rate is just over 12 cents and anticipated to fall in 2025 again. And so this 1.65 cent increase would be in addition, of course, to the 2024 rate. But I just want to point out that the rate of the library has decreased over the last few years. That concludes my portion of the presentation. Mrs. Byer?
Are there questions, the board, at this point?
I have a question, Jason. I'm putting you on the spot. I don't know that you can answer them. I appreciate your efforts. First of all, I know this is really complex, and you've made it really simple for us. Thank you. I'm curious, so your estimates are based on 6% interest, or interest expense. If it were at 4%, which is current, have an idea how much that impacts that $28 million?
I don't have the exact number, but I would say it would be in the, at least under 25 million, so a few million. I have examples in my head, but they're not all the same repayment term, but it would be under 25 million.
Want to get in there?
Yeah.
Funny, Pat, that's a real legitimate question, because on our original, you know, facility plan back in the early 2000s, we had three separate refinancings due to interest rate falling. So we are always, and Baker Tilly is always on the watch for, when does it trigger a time for us to refinance and have it be more beneficial to the community in payments?
Great question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, now it's time for the public, and we have one individual that has signed in, Beth Goldsmith. Beth, where are you? Thank you. Would you come to the microphone and give us your address and your comments?
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service and work in our community. And a few may remember back in 1973, which is when my family relocated to Fort Wayne, Indiana. I won't tell you how old I was at that time, before internet, before computers, you know, being carried around and so forth. And the library was always important to our family. It was a Georgetown branch at that time that was most important, and I can tell you how many times we would come to the downtown branch for a variety of services. Fast forward now, I've been a Realtor here for 31 years, and I really appreciate the way you have highlighted the migration data in our community, because that is vital. But one little element that I think you're missing is you might want to get some information from the National Association of Realtors, because what do we know about today's generation and workforce? What's fascinating to me is that my generation used to go to the job first, and then they make the community and so forth fit. What we know is that many of the younger folks in the younger generation pick the community first because of quality place amenities, the lifestyle that they want to live, and they figure out their job. So if you talk to any of the employers, some of you are here, they're trying to figure out how to recruit and retain top talent. Wouldn't you say that's correct? The library is one of our quality of place amenities. It is an economic development project, in my opinion. But what I find about the library, it is a great economic equalizer across all generations. So I'm now at the point in my career where I help a lot of seniors. And here's what I know about seniors. The Libby app, the audio options, the large print versions, the mobile deliveries that you have that go around, valuable resources for the aging population. So if you want to target those baby boomers and older, crucial resource. But the other thing that I'd like to highlight is that when I work with folks relocating to Fort Wayne and we're doing a community tour, one of the most fundamental parts of our tour, for most Realtors, not just me, is we highlight our flagship location right here. It is an anchor in downtown. But then we highlight some of the other branch buildings as well. And yes, we highlight the programming. So if they have kids in school, young ones, it's easy to highlight all of the programs that we provide through the Allen County Public Library for youth. But we're not limited to structures, right? People get excited when they hear about all of the different online options that they can use at our public library. So I would just like to, first of all, thank you again for your service, the important work that you're doing, and as you hopefully pass this and go to council, that it is also remembered as a great economic equalizer and as one of our biggest quality of place assets in Allen County. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I see no one else has signed.
Ben, I believe folks may be wanting to speak on this topic, but they signed the sheet instead.
Oh, okay. Keith Rafferty? Lisa Worrell?
Hi, everybody. I am Lisa Worrell. My address is 4631 Indiana Avenue. And I just want to come here and register my support on the public record for supporting the facilities master plan. I am a former employee. I was here through the last major building campaign, and my last 14 years of service was as a branch manager. I am intimately familiar with the state of our buildings. They desperately need some attention, and I know that we have in our system here a nationally renowned expert on building spaces. And I really hope that the board will vote to support this and put her to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Did we miss anyone else?
We have one more public comment.
Okay. Could you read that, please?
This is from Kristen Dunk, Timber Mill Run. The boy branch is my home branch and has been for over 20 years. It was nice size for my son and I when he was two, and we would walk to it. It has been too small to service population easily for quite some time. Because of its location, it cannot be expanded upon and needs to be relocated. Hopefully, in this move, there will be the ability for it to have outside space for programming, gathering, and for kids with no Wi-Fi at home to access schoolwork when necessary. As yes, there are homes As yes, there are homes in this area that cannot afford Wi-Fi. COVID taught us that. And parking, goodness, yes, more parking. And meeting space, Boyke staff has had some amazing speakers in the past, yet I am hesitant to attend because being that snug in that community room is just not for me. I think building a new branch makes good sense, especially considering the high school expansion. I would support this wholeheartedly. I have also frequented the Dupont Branch. It too needs a new building and better parking. In reading the master plan, the recommendations look spot on, and the comments mirrored many that I have thought with regards to getting in and out safely and access of materials. Again, this is a branch that serves a much larger population than it originally served and needs to adapt to the patrons' need. I really like the changes that have been made to the great hall in the main library, the ability to make private, yet security-conscious areas for people to meet, work, and eat while also moving them about for flexibility needs. It was a home run in my book. Well done. As you look to make these improvements to the library system suggested in the master plan, I do think, keeping in mind flexible fixtures, easy-to-understand signs, and navigation to areas outside areas made to work with that specific branch and the specific needs of those patrons will make a huge difference on how the project and the cost is accepted. And when you design, please talk to staff. I know one library that did a remodel that put a large wall portion by the cert desk that made it so you could not see the teen area. Not one of the finer decisions in architectural history. Thank you for your time and efforts in making this an outstanding library system.
Thank you. Well, that was quite inspiring. Thank you. No more comments? And YouTube, that was the final YouTube comment? So I declare the public hearing now closed. Let us move back then to our agenda. We have resolution of the library board authorizing the issuance of bonds, the expenditure of money held or to be held by the public library and related matters. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the resolution before you this afternoon is the resolution authorizing the issuance of the first phase of bonds for the transformation project. It is for an amount not to exceed $37 million in principal amount, repayment term not to exceed 20 years per series, and with the maximum total repayment of roughly $69 million, all of which was summarized in Mr. Tanzel's report earlier this afternoon. If you approve this resolution this afternoon, then it would go to the county council for their consideration, and if they approve it, then we would anticipate proceeding with the issuance of bonds next year and also get the appropriation at that point in time. The rest of the provisions in the resolution authorize all of the administration and the board president and board secretary and vice president to execute all documents that might be connected with the bond issuance. There will be several certificates. There will be a rating agency engagement letter that has to be signed. So there's various documents that have to be signed that, rather than listing all those in detail, we just authorize those as a blanket authorization. In addition, there's going to be an offering document called an official statement that will be prepared for each series of bonds that's been authorized in here. And then, to the extent that you sell the bonds to an underwriting company, they are required, under their rules, to have you contract to provide annual financial information on a national repository. You did this back when you had your bonds outstanding through 2021, and this would just be a new obligation, but that authorizes that as well. The other terms that are in here that will be subject to each time you do a sale, if we sell more than one series of bonds, the bonds can be subject to a prepayment option. That usually is about 10 years out, so you heard Dave talk about the fact that we did refinancing on some of your prior bonds when interest rates went down after they'd been originally issued. That would be an opportunity as well in these transactions, and there's some other terms in there with respect to amending the resolution under certain circumstances if you've got, if you needed to do that. That's not yet ever been enacted under a bond ordinance, but that's something that does give you flexibility. So this resolution is very similar to what you've approved back in the prior major transactions that you did back in the early 2000s, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding that bond resolution.
Can I have a motion to place in passage in a second that we can discuss?
Don't move.
Second. Any discussion, questions of Jeff?
What I have is so much of discussion or question to Jeff, just a comment. I've been on this board for quite a while now, so it's my 13th year, and I think, and I'm very happy with our staff, our administration, and the work that the board has put into moving forward with this project. And I just want to say, it's really been, yes, for the library, but it's really been for the entire community. We've really been trying to think about Allen County during this entire process, and whether this is a fiscally responsible and good way to spend community money. And overwhelmingly, I believe our community believes it is. I know, I believe our board believes it is. I've been looking at our executive summary report back in 2018, talking about conditions of buildings, about everything that needs to be done. And I think a lot of, we've tried to done everything we can with what we have, but I think this bond is vitally necessary, and so I'm going to be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Let the record show it's unanimous by those in attendance. We have another resolution, resolution of the library board approving the additional appropriation of bond proceeds, interest earnings, and money held or to be held by the public library and related matters. Jeff, any comments on that?
So just like when you approve the budget and you have appropriations in your budget to be able to spend revenues that come into the library for certain purposes, you need to have appropriations in place to be able to spend the bond proceeds and also the interest earnings. In addition, as you heard in the presentation, the library is committing to anticipating to spend roughly $24.9 million of library reserves that are either on hand or will be on hand over the next period of, through 2026 for this project. And so you need to appropriate that. This is, you've already appropriated $8 million of that for this building improvements to be able to capture those investment, or those Inflation Reduction Act investment credits that are going to be possible through the solar panels and the HVAC improvements. But this would be an increase of that up to $26 million for library funds for both this building, as well as other buildings that are part of the Phase One program. The bond proceeds and interest earnings, we have put in there an amount not to exceed $48 million. We don't anticipate that you're going to ever be able to earn over $11 million in interest earnings on your bond proceeds, but we want to make sure that, to the extent that you do earn interest on those, and we don't know what that is, we want to make sure that you have an amount that is higher than what you actually anticipate, so you don't have to repeat the process again, or you don't accidentally spend more money than you have appropriated. Under state law, if you don't spend all of the appropriation, and once the project is completed, that excess appropriation just goes away or expires at that point in time. So we always caution people to have that increasingly high, just to be safe, because it doesn't commit you to spend that money. It merely gives you the permission to do so if you have it available.
Can I have a motion and a second on the second resolution?
Don't move.
Thank you, Jim. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, then, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Let the record show it's unanimous by those in attendance. That's a pretty exciting thing that we just did. Now let's move on to the executive director's report.
More exciting things, Ben. And while I'm doing the director's report, Elena is going to start circulating those resolutions for you to sign, forgiveness in advance, because your hand might cramp up, because you do have to sign three copies of each one. I wanted to acknowledge our upcoming chief financial officer, who is here in attendance tonight, Jill Noll. Jill, congratulations on your future appointment. Until then, Dave is keeping the seat warm for you up here. We're glad to have you here, Jill. Congratulations. For a fourth year in a row, the library is teaming up with Super Shot to offer flu vaccine clinics at our libraries throughout October. This year, nine ACPL locations will offer the clinics where the public can receive flu and/or COVID vaccinated. Wanted to share that next Tuesday, October 1st, all libraries will be closed for our annual staff development day. This year, it will be held at the Grand Wayne Center. Thank you so much to the board for allowing us to close for this annual day of learning and team building. Also, thank you to the library friends and to the library foundation for providing funding support for the day's activities and the day's food, very important. And our keynote speaker will be Indiana poet laureate Curtis Chrisler, who is also an English professor at Purdue Fort Wayne. And all of you, as trustees, are invited to come join the fun for any and all of the day. We'd love to have you. October is a big month.
Susan, can I? When is the keynote speaker speak?
9:15.
Okay.
October is a big month around here, because October is Family History Month, and our genealogy center is going big, as they usually do. They are offering 31 days of free programming, as in, they are not missing a single day. They are having a program every single day, including the day we're closed for Staff Training Day, they're having a virtual program. It's an annual tradition that highlights the importance of preserving family stories and genealogical research. So we will have programs each day. Some will be online, some will be in person, some will be at branches. There's a full calendar of events online. Also, it will include special extended hours for geneologists in the genealogy center. On Friday night, October 25th, we'll be open until 9 o'clock for our genealogist. I am personally very excited, because one of my favorite authors is coming to us on October 7th, thanks to a grant from Indiana Humanities. Her name is Leah Johnson, and she is an award-winning Hoosier author for children and young adults. In 2021, Time Magazine named her book, You Should See Me in a Crown, one of the 100 best young adult books of all time. So I get a few perks in my job, and one perk is that I will be interviewing her as part of her keynote address, so very, very excited about that. Wanted to give an acknowledgement and thanks to the Fort Wayne Museum of Art, because they are loaning some of their prints to our Georgetown branch as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. We have borrowed two prints from their Graffiti Conos, contemporary Latino prints from the Surrey Project. They, I've seen pictures, I haven't seen them in person yet, but they are lovely, and thank you to them for loaning them to us for Hispanic Heritage Month. We have heard from one of our public comments with compliments about our new tables and chairs in the great hall and outside the genealogy center. If you haven't taken a look, I encourage you to do so before you leave today. We've received numerous compliments on them, particularly from patrons who wish to bring in a lunch or a coffee to enjoy during their library visit. A big thanks goes to Kim and to Tanya Friendl, our public services manager, and to Elena Massey, and to our event team for all of their work in the selection and installation and coordination of the new furniture. And finally, some late-breaking news that wasn't in your written report. Tomorrow night at 7:30, I believe, on primetime, Kurt is nodding, the PBS show Primetime, they filmed an episode in the Roland Center a few months ago, and it will air for the first time tomorrow night at 7:30 on PBS, which I believe is channel 37/1.
39.
39/1. Thank you very much, Kurt. And it will also be available on PBS Fort Wayne's YouTube page to watch. So we're excited. We take that a long time ago, and we're anxious to see it. And that is what I have for my report.
Well, thank you so much. Is there any new business that should come before this party? How about public comment? Quite a quiet group there. Okay, hearing and seeing no one to comment from the public, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
Don't move.
In the second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Let me remind you, at the conclusion of this meeting, we'll have a brief.
Intermission?
Yeah, intermission, and then a following.
Executive session.
Yeah, an executive session. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate the input of those that provided it, and we have exciting days ahead.
Thank you.
Very nice, Johnny.
Thank you so much.
You see anybody from the.